Seven o'clock and I think I see all of our school committee members, so I'm going to call the meeting to order at seven. And before we get started, could I just ask everyone? Ask everyone who's not ready to mute yourself? So I just wanted to talk with you before we get started. This meeting is being held in public means of public access pursuant to an order issued. The March 20th.
Carrie, you can't, you can't.
What you're saying.
Yeah, everything you're saying, people need to mute their lines if you would please.
Julie, Julie, could you mute everyone?
Okay. Carrie, you're muted.
Thank you. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the governor of Massachusetts dated March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You're hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with MGL. See chapter 30A, section 20F, so the chair may inform all participants of said recording. And I know I saw Mark from Harbor Media's recording. Is anyone else planning to record this meeting? If so, could you unmute yourself and identify yourself? Okay, seeing no one. The first item of business is 2.1, the minutes of the school committee meeting held on June 22nd, 2020.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on June 22nd, 2020.
I'll second.
Okay, and by roll call vote, we will vote. Michelle?
Yes.
Jen Benham?
I will abstain. I wasn't on the committee at that time.
Ness Corente?
Hi.
Carlos De Silva?
Hi.
Libby Lilkey?
Hi.
I'm an I and Liza O'Reilly?
Hi.
So the minutes are approved with one abstention. Item number two is minutes of the school committee meeting held on July 8th, 2020.
More that were approved the minutes of the school committee, school committee meeting held on June, July 8th, 2020.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Michelle. And we'll go through that again. So Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness Corente?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
I'm an I as well, so the minutes are approved. The section three is questions and comments, because as I mentioned, we have a big group tonight. I wanted to mention that items on the agenda are the reopening of schools, the superintendent's report of findings is his entry report, and policies ENF, which deal with facilities. If anyone has anything to say about any of those, we will be taking some comment as we proceed through the agenda. This section is for things that are not on the agenda. So the Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed in the meeting. In addition, we have set up up to 15 minutes at the beginning of this meeting for comments or questions that fall under the purview of the school committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guests wish to speak, please raise your hand. So just click on the participants button at the bottom of the Zoom screen and the raise hand at the far right under participants. State your name and address and address your comments to the chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the scope of the responsibility of the school committee. As established by Massachusetts general law, the responsibilities of the school committee are to, one, select and terminate the superintendent, two, review and approve budgets for public education in the district, and three, establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and consider the privacy interests of others. The public comment period is not a time for debate or response to comments by the school committee. The school committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made by the, during the public comment period. So that being said, if anyone has any comments about things that are not on the agenda tonight, could you please click on the participants and to the far right, right, raise your hand? Okay, I see June Gustafson?
Yes, I'd like to read a statement from the Hingham Education Association, if the committee chair will allow me to do that.
Is it regarding something on the agenda?
Um, it's a request from the association regarding upcoming school committee meetings.
Oh, okay.
So for those of you who don't know me, I'm June Gustafson. I'm a middle school social studies teacher. I'm president of the Hingham Education Association. I'm also on the board of directors for the Mass Teachers Association. So not only do I hear from Hingham educators, I also hear from educators across the state and know that Hingham does not have some of the issues that my out of district colleagues face. However, all of us, educators and families alike, are facing the logistics for the return, for a return to school like no other. The association would like to thank the hundred people plus people working on the reopening plans for the Hingham Public Schools, particularly the educators who volunteered and gave up part of their summer break, postponed vacations, and other disruptions to their lives. Their service is greatly appreciated. Educators in Hingham, indeed across the Commonwealth, have had incredible anxiety and concerns about returning to school. We know that reopening plans will be discussed tonight and then voted on at subsequent school committee meetings. No one plan is ideal, and not everyone will be happy. As educators, we know that any kind of in-person instruction and service delivery will look and feel very different. Anyone who knows our teachers understands that we want to go back, but when we look at what in-person learning looks like, it goes against what most of us practice in our classrooms. In a typical class, from day one, our students are out of their seats, interacting, interviewing each other in a variety of icebreaker activities. Classroom jobs are assigned, sometimes in pairs. During most of the year, there is always, almost always partner and group work. Most of these practices will not be able to happen with the safety and social distancing guideline protocols. All stakeholders need to understand what this will look and feel like. To that end, the association is respectfully requesting that the next two school, summer school committees take place in person in a Hingham classroom with all the social distancing guidelines and rules that our students will be expected to follow within several weeks' time, should we return to any kind of in-person learning. The meeting needs to be televised to see what classroom life will look and feel like upon our return. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you, June, for your thoughts, and we can certainly take this under consideration. The one thing I just wanted to note with this is part of one thing, and I appreciate all of your, everything you're saying, and we're hearing it too. One thing that we do have to balance with our meetings is that we have to allow for public participation. So that's something we'll take into consideration, but we can certainly consider it. Michael Seitau? Would you like to unmute yourself?
Hi, my name is Michael Seitau. I am a parent of a rising ninth grader and a parent of a rising eighth grader. And I, sorry, and I wholeheartedly support June's suggestion of if there's a way for parents either to see via televised classroom or see via Zoom, in-person classroom of what the return to school process would look like, so that we can support whatever decisions are made by the school system when we're talking about it to our kids. I think that's a great suggestion.
That's a great suggestion. If anyone has anything else, as I'd like to request, if, if your comments are about the reopening of schools, that wait, that is coming up very soon on the agenda, so we can discuss it then.
Did you also, sorry, did you, as a rule of order, did you also sort of disable the chat section so that we could sort of ask offline questions that could be dealt with later?
No, we don't, we don't do that, but we welcome emails at any time. If you go to the school committee, feel free to email any of us.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else have something for public comment that's not on the agenda? Okay, so we're going to move on to the next, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Austin?
Have to remember to unmute myself as well. Good evening, everyone. I don't think we've ever had quite this many people, 279. Glad to see so many people here that are presumably interested in, probably mostly about my report tonight on the reopening of schools. I want to start by making a fairly quick comment. This is going to be a 30,000-foot view. This is, we are still working. We're working daily in meetings. We're receiving guidance. In fact, we received guidance just five minutes before the meeting started tonight. Once again, new guidance and discussion about things that are changing that are going to alter the, our consideration for the opening of schools. I know that people are anxious to see a full report and plan for reopening. We do plan to have a draft out to the community by the weekend, because we have to submit our first submission to DESI on the 31st. And I thank people for their patience as we work through these issues and the questions that are many. So I'll start with that today and do my best to kind of let you know where we're at and the planning we're in right now. So Julie, I know you've got a PowerPoint. Could you please pull that up for me? Thank you. So the first part is just to give you the timeline. So our preliminary plan is due to DESI this Friday on the 31st. And what that includes is the feasibility study, which is basically if we were going to try to open, how many students could we open with? It's how feasible it is, transportation, et cetera. Any plans, we're going to describe our plans for our in-person, hybrid, and remote instruction as we're required to do. And we have to integrate our known DESI guidance to date. I will say, just for a point of reference, just to give you an idea of some of the changing landscape, just five minutes prior to the meeting tonight, I received a communication from DESI that the commissioner has now rolled back additional days of required school from 180 to 170. And provided we could start no later by September 16th, which if you used our calendar the way it was, would be just about right in our, in our start of the year. So that's just an example of the changing landscape, that he's just made that decision, and we just heard about that right now. Our final plan, which is due to DESI on August 10th, has to integrate the additional DESI guidance that's released after the preliminary plan is submitted, and any other necessary adjustments. Our final plan is subject to the approval of the school committee, which they'll meet on August 6th. But I believe they'll also talk about tonight about how we may take other comments, et cetera, along the way. And I will, I will caution everyone that our reopening plan is subject to change as dictated by local and regional health data. I think we all recognize that the best laid plans are subject to change at any time during these very fluid times that we're in. So things can change, they probably will, and even if school starts with a plan, you can count on it to probably change again based upon the conditions of our communities. So the components of the preliminary plan, DESI requested that each district conduct a feasibility study and submit three plans, which is fully open, hybrid, which is a combination of in-person and remote, and then full remote learning. The model for school opening, DESI requested information as to which model the district is leaning toward in our reopening. So on July 31, when we're done, we will give them an idea of which one we're leaning toward. In our guiding principle, DESI from the very beginning has asked district to focus efforts on safely bringing as many students back to school as possible for in-person learning. I'm not going to show this video, but this, this PowerPoint will be posted on our website. There is a video that DESI put out regarding the opening of school, and I would encourage you, when you look at it, to open up the YouTube video. So recent DESI guidance, which came on the 23rd. So the first was the waiver for student learning time requirements is, are going to be expected. So I said changes in scheduling related to the use of space, including the staggered schedules, mealtime scheduling, are going to require flexibility. Schools and districts are likely need to be more flexible with student learning time in order to be enabled more students to return to school in person. And the school calendar may need to be adjusted to allow additional district planning or professional development days. The 180-student day requirement may be decreased to accommodate the additional planning and professional development days. This can potentially delay the originally planned first days for students. And as I just mentioned, five minutes before the meeting, this has been changed down to 170 days. So it will delay the start of school this year as we allow teachers enough time to plan for the level of instruction they need to provide. And so that's where we're at right now. So other facilities and operations planning. The district is developing a facilities and operations plan to ensure the effective implementation of health and safety guidance. The plan will include the following key areas. We're going to develop plans to prepare the following spaces prior to the start of the school year. Student learning spaces, staff office setup, mask break spaces, student eating areas, medical waiting rooms, entry and exit points, storage and disposal, unnecessary furniture, other items. And before we move on that slide, people have got to, and I think to, to support a little what June Gustafson has just said to us, school is going to look very different. We've had to remove literally every piece of furniture out of the rooms, and so there is literally just desks remaining. I sent a picture of you, when you did the survey last week, there were pictures on that survey of what a three-foot spacing and a six-foot spacing classroom looked like, and, and that was without everything removed. We need to remove the furniture so we can maximize how many students can be safely in a space. All desks have to fit forward or sit forward with that spacing, and there won't be a lot of moving around the classroom is the, is the requirements we're going to have. Thank you, Julie. Go ahead. Addressing the family and staff safety concerns. So making modification facilities and building systems is feasible. The district is working to develop plans to ensure the additional fixtures and appropriate modifications to existing physical spaces. Hand washing, hand sanitizing stations, ventilation and HVAC system, always, bathrooms, water fountains, lockers, signage throughout the building. You may see tape on the floor, which way to go in, in any time, which students are, or the direction which students should be moving in. We were doing all those things to our buildings. We need to develop operational protocols to align all staff, family, students, and visitors on expected healthy behaviors and precautions. As cleaning and disinfecting, our food prep and distribution, movement in the facility itself, arrival and dismissal of students, sharing items, visitors and volunteer engagement, and using the medical waiting room. We recently received guidance from DESI in regards to safety protocols. For example, if there is more than one confirmed COVID-19 case, either students or staff in the school at one time, or if there's a series of single cases in a short time span, school leaders and the superintendent should work with the local board of health to determine if it's likely that there is a transmission happening in the school. I do partner very closely with the Hingham Department of Public Health and Sue Sarni, the director of that. We are working collaboratively every week, basically, and so we have been since last February, actually, to determine the, the health and safety of our buildings. There will be protocols, there will be start-stop protocols that talk about, you know, when do you have to shut down a school? When do you send a student home? All of those protocols still have to be worked out. These are, these are just basic guidelines from DESI. Number two, for an individual case, for example, the district will follow any DESI protocol documents. And note that then when there is one isolated case, students close contacts will also need to stay home and be tested, not the whole school necessarily. When there is a suspected in-school transmission beyond one cohort or a small number of cohorts, school and district leaders must consult the local board of health, has to propose next steps. These steps could include, for example, making a decision to, A, close part of the school for the entire school for a short period of time, for an extensive cleaning or other facility mitigation, or close the school partially or fully for the longer duration of a 14-day quarantine period. Should there be circumstances where there are multiple cases in multiple schools, school and district leaders must consult with the local board of health, has to propose next steps. These steps could include, for example, making a decision to shut down the district for a short period of time for extensive cleaning, shut down the district for the longer duration, or of a 14-day quarantine period. Again, we're going to need to prepare, and we're going to talk a little bit about this when we get to the education part. We're going to need to prepare to be able to pivot in and out of remote learning regardless of what we do. Because there is a very real possibility that if you don't start in remote, you will certainly, could very well be in remote either shortly or, or some period during, during the fall. And we need to be prepared for that, and as you do as well. For transportation, this was just released on the 22nd. Students should be seated no more than one student per bench on the bus, alternating sides for each row, which allows students to maintain approximately three feet of physical distance. Children from the same household may sit together and in closer proximity. For examples, we could have two students on a bench in the same family. Ventilations, the windows will be open at all times during operation unless not possible due to extreme weather conditions. Seat assignments, students will be assigned to a single bus and a particular seat. And bus monitors, we're going to have to consider adding bus monitors, whether that's volunteers, student leaders, staff members for every bus to ensure the strict adherence to these health and safety guidelines. So this is additional, this is DESI gave us a kind of outline of how many students would fit on a bus. Most of our buses, as you can see, our average Hingham bus has 77 passenger buses. At max capacity, assuming that only one per seat, we have 25 passengers per bus. We run 22 bus, we have 22 buses we use, and so if you do the math, you end up somewhere in the neighborhood of 550 students that we could transport in any one given run. So that's obviously only a portion, about 12, 15%, just doing the math in my head quickly, of what we actually have for student population. So we had a family survey that went out, and I want to share a little bit of that information with you. So this fall, we, we looked at summary, summary demographics by school. We had 3,433 responses, an 80% response rate, which is almost unheard of. So obviously, this is an important issue for a lot of people. So anticipated 2020, 21 enrollment is somewhere in the neighborhood of 4,289. So our total survey return rate was 80%. It was fairly consistent, much higher, well, it was higher in the elementary schools with East at 85%, Foster 89, BRS 84, South 87, and then 77% at middle school and 72% at high school. This is just the grade. As you can see, it's a, it's a pretty fairly consistent, up in the mid 200s per grade that responded to the survey. So we asked a couple of questions because that was the guidance. We were given guidance from DESI that said you could use a minimum of three feet, up to six feet for, for distancing. So we asked the question, in context of safety protocols listed above, how likely would you be to send your child to school this fall if desks were spaced three feet apart? And so what you see in the picture is the three-foot spacing. Thanks to Katie Hartman, and I went in and set that classroom up and took pictures a couple of weeks ago. And that's what a three-foot classroom looks like. And out of the 3,433 responses, we had 18.1% said they were not likely to send their child back to school. It's almost 20% of the population. Another 800, almost 800 people, another 23% said they were undecided, that they would send their children back. And then 58.7, so a little more than half, just less than 60%, said that they would send their child back to school under the three-foot spacing. With three-foot spacing, before you move on to that, I want to be clear that even with three-foot spacing, and you're going to see that later on, we could still only fit somewhere in the neighborhood of 16 to 17 desks in the average-sized classroom. Our class sizes are anywhere between, on average, 20 or 21, 22. So obviously, even at three-foot spacing, we cannot fit all of our students into our classrooms at one time. So at six-foot spacing, you're asked the same question, how likely would you be to send your child back to school under six-foot spacing? And overwhelmingly, it was a, it was a much better result in how many people would be likely, with 78.4%, almost 80% of the people saying they would likely send their child back. Now we're down to 15% of undecided, and only 6%, and I apologize, the blue doesn't say it, but it's got up the math, it comes out right. 6% said that they were not likely to send their children back. So only 6% of our population of student body of respondents said they would not send their child back to school if we provided six feet physical distancing. To be clear with six-foot physical distancing, so the people understand, this can serve about 10 to 12 students maximum at the elementary level. That becomes more difficult at the high school level, because the rooms are sometimes different sizes, and they're much, some are smaller, based on the age of school. So one of the things that I wanted to do was give you kind of an idea, and I took the top five most prevalent responses to the question. If you indicated that you're undecided and likely to send your child to school, in either scenario, please select one of the following reasons. The number one response was there are too many unknowns with regard to long-term impacts of COVID-19, 1,074 responses. Next to that, I'm worried about my child's ability, child's peers to follow protocols with regard to wearing a mask and physical distancing. So being able to follow the rules. Then we get down to the 500, a family member is in a high-risk group with respect to COVID-19. Fourth is I'm worried about the ability of my child to follow protocols with regard to wearing a mask and just distancing. And finally, in the top five, my child is a high-risk group with respect to COVID-19. I want to, I want to say a couple of things about, obviously, that people are very concerned about the unknowns. But also, I heard a lot of concerns about K1, because the guidance from DESI at K1 was that they are strongly recommended, which does not, does not align frankly with Massachusetts rule that, that basically says any child over two needs to wear a mask. Two to three, two to four is recommended. Anyone over the age of five needs to wear a mask in public. So the school committee, policy subcommittee, will be reviewing if we're going to have in-person school, if students in K1, if we should have a policy that requires them to wear a mask. There are many people who are very concerned that they are not at that level, and so that will be discussed soon. So the hybrid, we, that was the, the opening. If we were to full open, we'd have to be within distancing. So then we moved to the hybrid. And we gave the people a choice and said in a hybrid model of instruction with student cohorts alternating between in-person and remote, you would prefer the following schedule, either a, so if we had two cohorts looking at a, either a half-week schedule where basically we'd have students in two days a week, we have a middle day for a deep cleaning, we bring back the other cohort on the second day, and so one cohort would be Monday, Tuesday, remote. The second cohort would be Thursday, Friday, remote, and then everyone would be remote on Wednesdays. So there would be five days of instruction, but they would flip depending on what cohort they're in. And again, 62%, so a large majority said they would prefer the middle or the midweek or half-week hybrid schedule versus a week on, week off. So the technology needs, we also need to prepare. As I said, we have to prepare for remote right now. There's no question that that is either, even if we don't start in remote, we have to prepare to be able to pivot to that quickly, which means that everyone needs to have the ability and the technology. So as you know, I, I hope you know, we have purchased laptops for every teacher in the district to ensure that they have the technology available to them, and we have many, many hundreds of Chromebooks on order right now. But our survey said that at least 1,292 students would need or require technology in order to do remote learning. That will be our goal, to make sure that we have at least 1,300 devices to provide students. Now the anticipated transportation needs. In the event that your child is eligible, we asked the question, for bus transportation fall, and assuming requirements such as masks for students and three to six-foot distancing, do you plan to send, have your child take the bus? And assuming requirements such as masks for students and three to six foot distancing, do you plan to send, have your child take the bus? One thousand four hundred and seven or forty one percent of the respondents said they would. Um, and two thousand twenty five said no. I I would say that I've heard from many parents who have clearly told me they were willing to transport their child. They know that this could be an issue and I and I wanna say how much I appreciate, um, that offer. However, by policy, I can't reinforce that. If somebody, in fact, the commissioner's been pretty clear with us, that if somebody changes their mind tomorrow. Then we need to be able to provide that transportation. Um, the fact is that, as I said, we could only transport five hundred and fifty students at one time, give or take. Uh, there'll be some families in that, so maybe up to six hundred. We're gonna have to look at policy on who we transport, uh, and potentially make an emergency adjustment. Uh, to policy in a temporary way, uh, until, uh, we get back to a normal way of of, um. Transportation, that is something the policy committee will be taking up soon as well. So when we get into the, uh, instructional model considerations. So despite, I I wanna acknowledge a couple of things. One, despite the guidance and plannings regarding health and safety. We have to acknowledge that there are many individual concerns about bringing students back to school in large numbers. Students and staff in high-risk categories are very likely to be advised against returning to school in person until it's safe to do so. I have heard from many of you, and I know that there are almost three hundred people on this call tonight. And I know that some of you are advocating for a full in-person opening and others want remote. We have to acknowledge that there is a tremendous amount of anxiety and we need to be thoughtful of the health and safety of all of our people. Uh, and and so this is a task that, how appreciative I am of. The hundred people that are working on a daily basis trying to figure out the balance. Uh, I wanna take also the time to thank Dr. Lillaw for the amount of work he's done with the education subcommittee. And really thinking about the reopening of schools. Um, Dr. Venice for working through, um, the the population of children special needs. Uh, for John Ferris looking at, um, the facilities and operations. Uh, and and Katie, um, Katie Roberts for her communications work. This is a very, very difficult situation, uh, and it's causing a tremendous amount of anxiety. Uh, and so we appreciate the patience and and the reason why we're being so cautious. Is because we're listening to all of these things and we're doing our very best to come up with the very best plan. That meets the needs of the of our children, uh, overall. Although Desi has recommended a classroom physical distancing range of not less than three to six feet. It is clear that a majority of our parents, almost eighty percent, prefer six foot spacing. Uh, in comparison to the three foot. At three foot, eighteen percent of our parents said they would not likely send their children back to school. With an additional twenty three percent undecided. At the six foot, only six percent of the parents said they would not send their children back to school. So it's clear that people want a safe space for their children. But knowing that and knowing that we can only put a maximum of probably ten to twelve students in any classroom at any one time. That certainly does create the need to go and think about a hybrid solution. So even if we all agreed to return to school with a minimum of a three foot distance. Majority of our classrooms could not accommodate all of our students. So in the beginning, I talked about a feasibility study and so it is absolutely not feasible. For the, uh, for Hingham Public Schools to offer a full, open solution, uh, at this time. Uh, and we will, we'll report that to Desi on Friday. Feasibility continued. So recently released guidance from Desi indicated that our buses can only transport students to the maximum of twenty five students on board. So even though many parents said that they would be willing to transport, this cannot be required. The district must prepare to transport per current policy. Therefore, as I said, the policy committee will review transportation policies at its next meeting. Given the current guidance, uh, and requirement. The district has determined that a full in-person reopening of schools is not feasible as a starting point. We will continue to work up, uh, and and I think that's what you'll hear. Um, we will continue to work towards that end to get as many students in as possible. So the district is considering a phased in hybrid model to begin the school year. We will be working on the details and I'll have a draft plan to you by the end of the day on Friday. So I want to be clear about phased in. One of the things that I appreciate so much out of Dr. Lillaw and the team that he's been working on. We've really watched the state of Massachusetts and how it's reopened, um, the government and the economy. Um, one of the reasons I think that, or I think has been clear, that the state has taken a very thoughtful approach. Um, and a slow approach to reopening in a safe way. Um, we believe that's probably true also for the school system to open slowly. To open in smaller numbers, uh, and then if possible, and then increase over time. We're not talking long periods of time, but giving us the ability to to have some confidence in our protocols, uh, and the way things work. Makes a lot of sense. So, and I may ask, um.
Sorry, there's somebody named Isla, could you mute yourself, please?
Thank you, it gave me a chance to listen and I might throw some water, thank you. Um, so a- and I may let, um, or I may ask Dr. Lillaw to jump in here, but. So the district is, this is his learn from anywhere model, um, and I'll, I'll give him the full credit for this. Um, the district is working on instructional core that is designed as a progressive phased in approach to full in-person learning and if needed. Allows the cohorts, grade levels, or schools to make progressive movement backwards or forwards. As health data warrants through a phased in reentry that best ensures the health and safety of our faculty, our staff, our students, and our families. In this learn from anywhere model, we ensure that all students have access to our rigorous, rigorous curriculum. We ensure the ability to pivot effectively between learning models as local help data dictates. We ensure the status, uh, students not returning to school are fully engaged in the district's academic program. Uh, and we differentiate approach to accommodate the academic and social emotional needs of our K to five population, six to eight, nine, twelve. I will say it is a requirement, so I know that there are parents that do not want to send their children back to school, or that. I shouldn't say that, not want to. I'm sure you want to send your child back to school, you don't feel it's safe to do so. We respect that a hundred percent, uh, and we have an obligation to ensure that you have.
I couldn't get the audio, so I was having issues. I just wanna make sure I'm unmute, hold on. Michelle's iPhone, could you mute yourself, please?
Thank you. Thank you. Um, so we are obligated to provide a remote education to you, um, during that time. Um, but Dr. Lillaw, do you wanna add anything to this? I think this was, uh, your, your mind. Uh, working very well and and wanna make sure that you have the ability to, to expand upon what I had said.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to talk a little bit about the work that the Instruction and Social Emotional Learning Subcommittee. Of the RAC has been working through. Um, we sort of took the the mindset that, um, given the, uh. Uncertainty relative to reopening, the dependency of reopening on the appropriate health and, uh, matrix and and data points relative to the spread of the virus. Um, coupled with the need, uh, to transition an organization, um, sort of. In in terms of, to transition us, um, so we remain nimble in response to that data. Uh, we decided to take the sort of learn from anywhere approach where essentially. Um, in design and implementation, we sort of designed for, essentially, we're, we're sort of designing for remote learning. But really being able to deliver that learning anywhere that the child is. Um, we are, is a lot of, as you can imagine, um, uh, intricate details, uh, woven through, woven through how to make this work successfully. Uh, and that's the work that we're continuing to engage in now, uh, as as a subcommittee, but the idea. Um, is that if a particular class or a particular cohort of kids or a particular bus or neighborhood. Um, does need under the, um, stop-start procedures to sort of not attend school in physically in person for a period of time. We need to have the ability for that cohort or that group or that grade to be able to transition to remote learning. Period of time when they're not able to physically attend school. Uh, because the other sort of layer in the planning is the start-stop protocol, so that if there's a potential exposure. Here are the steps that you have to take, uh, if the person is tested and they're negative, here's what you have to do if they're tested and they're positive, here's what has to happen. Uh, and generally speaking, there's a fourteen day quarantine period. Where they're not allowed really, and and this is different than sort of self-isolation quarantine is you cannot leave your home. Um, really at all, uh, unless there's a medical or some kind of an emergency event. Um, and so they would be under a quarantine for for two weeks or fourteen days. Uh, in that instance, we would have to then deliver remote learning, uh, to those kids. Uh, because of potential exposure for the start-start protocols who are not able to be in school. Um, and so that, um, we were trying to think through how best to conceptualize sort of teaching and learning in an environment where every single day. Um, you could have a different population of people in front of you due to a number of sort of potential scenarios. So the learn from anywhere model was designed, again, to be responsive to all of our students. To give everybody sort of what they need in an individual sense, and so when the final plan does get released. Uh, because we are trying to at this stage of the process, keep us at sort of a thirty thousand foot level, uh, we are making sort of specific accommodation. For individual kids on individual bases who might need something more. It also, this also allows, this phase in approach also allows us to address the concerns relative to skill. And where kids left off, we haven't actually seen kids in person, uh, since March. Um, and so six months later, where are their reading skills, where are their math skills and giving our faculty time. Uh, as we again, look at that phased reentry to sort of address the social emotional concerns. To address the, uh, sort of do some dipsticking and assessment of academic skill. And then to sort of, uh, develop, uh, sort of a targeted intervention program. For our kids that need that support in addition to providing, uh, the instruction, um. That all of our kids are entitled to as residents and students with here, with here with us here in Hingham. The other, um, uh, sort of side caveat there is the need to, um, for special education services to be delivered and in some instances. Um, compensatory plans for service delivery need to be, um, implemented and executed. Um, as well as regulatory timelines, uh, and compliance with those timelines, uh, needs to be adhered to. So i- in the sort of, as we pull back and look at that thirty thousand foot plan, this phase in approach allows. Um, within the infrastructure of a school day, um, to the best that we can sort of think through at this stage, sort of how best to to. Address all of those needs, um, all simultaneously at the same time. Um, so that's, so the learn from anywhere model, again, is designed, uh, to allow us. To have individual cla- classes or individual kids or, um, cohorts of kids sort of transition in and out of learning in person. Uh, due to a number of issues, whether they are not attending or whether they can't attend because of a quarantine or a potential exposure.
Thank you, Dr. Lillaw.
Thank you, Dr. Austin.
Uh, next. So one of the things that I know people are very concerned about, uh, is that, is the remote learning. And we wanna tell you, we acknowledge, um, that the spring was not up to what people's expectation. Uh, and that although we're still working on that now, uh, we know that we need to have a significantly enhanced remote learning plan. Which we would, um, which may be necessitated at any point, uh, during the COVID crisis for some or all students. Uh, and we'll emphasize synchronous instruction, live instruction, so I will emphasize mandated attendance taking. And robust grading, uh, practice. Hybrid instruction, which is a cohort A B model, will make every effort to keep families together in the same cohort. Regardless of student grade and level, we know that's a concern for some. Stepwise phase from remote, hybrid, in-person instruction will be determined by local health data. So we will work very closely with the Department of Health, uh, and and make changes based upon that data. Uh, and we'll be guided by the principles of mask wearing, hand washing, and physical distancing. We didn't say, uh, on on this slide perhaps, but the ability to partner with parents, uh, to help us, uh, keep our, our schools safe. To reinforce mask wearing, uh, is really critical, uh, for us to be successful. Uh, and and so we asked that, uh, we certainly partner with our, our parents. Students requiring support will be prioritized for in-person instruction. When more restrictive distance measures are in place, so we will prioritize students with special needs. And other students that need, uh, support for in-person instruction, they will be the first to have that. Professional development, technology and related infrastructure are key components of a successful reentry plan. So we've been trying to communicate regularly, um, and we have been doing that since, uh, June. With regular, uh, weekly messages, uh, some videos, uh, we've been, uh. Our last one was the twenty fourth, um, was just sent out last weekend. We will continue that, uh, throughout this process. Uh, I try to give you all the information I have in a clear and consistent manner. Uh, so to keep you informed as we continue to progress, uh, in in our planning. So what's upcoming, today we have our meeting tonight, on Wednesday, I do have a coffee talk with educators. Uh, our preliminary plan is due on the thirty first and there'll be another superintendent's message, uh, with that plan attached. So you will see the preliminary plan at that time. On Thursday, the sixth, the school committee, uh, will meet again, I'm sure take commentary. Uh, and then vote on a, uh, final plan. Uh, and again, I'm gonna caution people, caution people that it is a final plan as of August sixth. Uh, and that may need to change, uh, based upon, uh, any new information. On the seventh, you'll have another superintendent's message, which will include the final plan. Uh, as well as a video message, uh, and another family survey. Uh, we'll complete the plan to Desi on the tenth. Um, on Thursday, the thirteenth, there'll be a superintendent coffee talk at nine AM. Uh, hosted by the school committee, so we can answer questions about the, um, uh, about the plan itself. On the fourteenth, another, uh, family message, and the week of the seventeenth, there will another be, uh, we're gonna probably shift. To school-based communications as we begin to to think about the transition. I wanna thank everyone for your patience. I know it's not, it's not ideal, not have the full plan in front of us, I know that people want that as quickly as possible. Um, but I I am appreciative of the amount of work that over a hundred people are putting into this. Uh, and the thought that I know that all of you have received, I I don't know how many, I've lost track of the emails. I get a lot of them, uh, and I do read them all, uh, I try to respond even if it's just to say thank you. Um, but we read them, we hear you, we know this is a tough situation. And I wanna be clear, there isn't anybody in our system that does not want to have these students back. But we have to find this balance that balances the safety of our students and staff. Um, and and the education they suggest we need. Uh, and so, uh, I look forward to providing more information to you on Friday night. Um, with our, our plan, our preliminary thoughts, uh, and thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you, Dr. Austin, this really isn't, and it's clear that there are things are changing day to day and there are so many moving parts. And your team, um, again, as well as all of the people, you mentioned there are, I think, a hundred people working on this plan. So over the summer and just wanna thank you all for your efforts. Um, and I also wanna say thank you to the community, we appreciate your patience, um, and the staff as well. Um, because we are, we're hearing from you and we encourage you to keep reaching out with your thoughts. Um, we understand the anxiety around this, uh, around the return to school as well as the frustration. At not being able to plan, especially when it comes to, um, childcare, among other things. Um, so for, before we open it up, I see some hands up. Before we, uh, call in anyone there, is there anyone in the, on the committee who has a question or a comment? Liza?
Uh, yeah, I just, I would like to thank the staff for putting that into a presentation. Because there are so many details and so many people working on this, to put it into a cogent message is very helpful. Last week, we were on a conference call with school committees across the state. And, um, a few of them have seen a draft and I'm very pleased that we saw this initial communication tonight. Thank you very much for putting that together. Um, there are many other communities that are not nearly where we are, so thank you very much for all of that. Uh, I would also like to emphasize, since we have three hundred and thirty eight people on this call right now. How vitally important wearing a mask is. And for adults, please model behavior to your children that you. that you must wear a mask all the time. Also, please work now in the next couple of weeks to find masks that are comfortable for your children to wear. I was with my young nieces and nephews this weekend and they were fidgeting because they did not have a mask that was comfortable for them. There are many options out there. You can sew them yourself, you can have a friend sew them, you can buy them. But please work now to find the style and there are many styles, but find something that your children are comfortable with. And this is all ages of children. I have teenagers and each one of my children prefers a different style. But now we have many in the style that they prefer and they're wearing them. So I urge everyone, please work on this now. It will also not allow the curve in Massachusetts to get any higher, but it will also allow us to have school appropriately. So that's my little soapbox for tonight. And as we move on, I look forward to more information. And I personally am working on my assignments every single day. So everyone involved with the schools is working very hard on this. So thank you, everyone, for having a good team and being committed to this.
Thank you, Liza. Michelle, I think your hand was up?
Yes, thank you. Um, I have a few things to say, so sorry. But I'm not even sure where to start, to be honest. But I had said this on a call the other day, and I guess this is a, a message for the community, right? Because we understand how hard this is. We know it's hard on parents, you know, it's really hard on kids. It is also hard on our educators and our leadership team. I really don't think it is too dramatic to say that the decisions that are being made are literally life and death decisions. And nobody ever expected that when we ran for a school committee or when we interviewed to be superintendent or assigned up to be a teacher, that we were going to have to be thinking about things like this. And for a lot of weeks, I sort of thought, well, there's really not any wrong or right answer to this. You know, we'll just, we'll figure it out and we'll make the best of it. But just in recent days, well, maybe more middle of the nights, I haven't realized that there, there is a wrong answer, right? And the wrong answer is we go back too soon and we put our kids and our teachers in harm's way. And we just, we cannot do that. I, I'm not willing to take the gamble that one of our children in Hingham or one of our teachers is the, is the statistical anomaly, right? There's a lot of talk that kids don't get this, it's not that bad for kids. The numbers are so low and we have been incredibly unfortunate where we live that that has been the case. But it's not the case everywhere and we're seeing it, right? People die from this disease. It is a novel virus, right? That means we don't know a lot about it. So I think we cannot take too much care and too much concern as we come up with our plan. And I know it's really disheartening to parents. I can't even decide if it's more disheartening for parents of younger kids or parents of older kids. But I think the one thing that I've taken away the past couple of weeks that I think it's important for folks to realize, and Michael mentioned it earlier in the call, is that it's going to be so different this year and kids are going to need so much more. Like the normal things that kids get out of school, that the learning is just one part of it, right? The bigger part is the socialization and the giggling and the sharing and the running around on the playground and eating lunch together. And that's not happening. And that sucks, right? Because that's not what school is supposed to be about and that's not how kids really learn. And it's not how teachers teach. And I think we just have to recognize that, that when kids come back, they're going to need an environment where they can feel safe and they can feel supported and they can giggle and socialize and gossip in the bathroom and chat with each other. Because if they don't have that for six or seven hours a day, that is a lousy environment to be in. But I also think it's a lousy environment to be in when you need that reassuring pat on the shoulder from your teacher or your teacher gets the little dynamic that's going on in the corner and moves the chair and moves a friend to sit next to someone. And if the kids aren't getting that because their teacher's six feet away wearing a mask and it's just, it's not going to be the same experience. And it's so hard and we're all doing the best that we can. And I guess I just want to ask for people to be understanding and to be supportive because there isn't anybody on this call or in this community who doesn't want the best thing for our students and for our staff. And I think we just have to be patient with each other and understanding. And the, the, the kids will get the learning. Somehow this incredibly talented group of administrators, department heads, principals and teachers will figure it out. So I guess I'm just asking for your patience and most importantly, your support for all that, the work that's being done to get as good of an education as we can for the kids of Hingham while ensuring their social and emotional health as well as their physical health and the health of our staff. Because teachers, they do a lot. And sorry, one more second on my soapbox because if people have, you know, if people want to write to someone and you want to say what you feel, you know who you write to? Write to your congressman and ask him, where's the money? Why did this country get $350 billion out to small businesses to keep paychecks going? But the public schools in this country haven't seen a dime yet from our government. And I'm not one to say let's pay tax everybody and let's spend a lot of money. But when we're putting teachers and asking them to stand in front of classrooms and put their lives in danger and we are putting plastic, you know, plastic dividers up at a bar, but we're giving our teachers a mask and saying, fingers crossed, this is going to be okay, right? That's not right. So reach out to your legislatures and legislators and ask them, please fund the schools. We need funding to make this return to school as safe as we can possibly make it for everyone.
Thank you, Michelle. I see Carlos's hand up.
Just want to say that, Dr. Austin, to you and your team and everyone involved, I must say thank you. I also want you to consider, because we do live in a very close nature community, to think about the possibility of having, you know, parents that are willing to actually give rights to other students on their own, that perhaps if there is a way for us to come up with a program where if necessary to have some of the parents curry, just to be as a plan B if we need it. So I just want to thank everyone for, you know, being involved and for being patient. This is not an easy process. It's been very hard and the anxiety level is on everyone. And we are working very hard to make sure that this is a safe return to, for everyone, from the custodian all the way up to the teachers and principals and so on and so forth. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Carlos. Is there anyone else, Ness?
I'll unmute myself. I'm not going to be long because I've seen many hands from the community members who want to have a chance to speak, but I wanted to go back and, and thank everybody. I know everybody's been working hard. I'm on the learning and social emotional group and that's been broken up into four different groups. So I can't even attend all of the meetings for my R R A C because some of them happen at the same time. So I know that there's lots of great discussions going on. The teachers and the parents and everybody who are on those committees, they hear you. They're hearing, hearing the feedback. There's a lot of great discussions happening. But I wanted to jump on a couple of things that Michelle and Carlos had brought up. Our economy, as we've seen, it is, our teachers and schools are essential. We can't get fully back to work if people are not able to have a safe place for their kids to go. But I think I want to reiterate that we have to do it in a safe manner. And one of the things that I would love to see if we could do with the town is possibly set up something maybe in combination with the rec center or KIA, where we get a space and the people who are not in school at a time, the kids could be sent to this space and be socially distanced there. And maybe be set up with a tutor like person or somebody that's kind of like a para that could help the kids, especially of the working parents who don't have a place to drop the kids off, to help them get onto their remote, you know, synchronous learning or do the remote learning that they're going to be doing when they're not physically in the, in the buildings. So something that I would love to chat with the selectmen about and maybe we can come up with a thoughtful way to get that done to help alleviate some of the pressure for the parents.
Thank you, Ness. And you're, you're right, you, you bring up a really good point. And this is highlighting all of, all of the pressure, all the, everything we're asking our schools and our teachers to take on. We can't, we literally can't restart our economy without our schools. So I like Michelle's suggestion to reach out to your congressman and let's advocate for funding too, on top of everything we're already doing. Okay, so I'm going, if nobody else on the committee has anything, I'm going to start taking people. I see a lot of hands up for anyone who's joining us later, because there are so many of us. If you want to ask a question or make a comment, please go down to participants at the bottom of the screen and then raise your hand, the little button on the bottom right. And comments, we are going to limit to three minutes per speaker just because there are so many, but we want to hear from as many as possible. So the first person is Isla. Is Isla still on?
I think she, I think she's still on mute.
Oh. Isla, are you muted? Okay, let's move on to Sky Wiseman, I'll come back to her.
Thank you, and thank you everyone for so much hard work that you guys are doing. It's just really amazing and phenomenal. I have actually four points that I want to ask. The first one is we've asked about less than, or we've shown the three foot option. We've asked about the three foot option, we've asked about the six foot option, but it's supposed to be between three and six, three feet and six feet. And so my question is, has, is it three or six feet in the way that we're interpreting it? Or is it, you know, four and a half feet fine? So that's my first question. My second question is around Metco and whether what we're doing for Metco in this environment and when we go remote, what are we doing to support Metco students from a connectivity perspective? Whereas naturally, there's a little bit more connectivity happening within town. How do we make sure that the neck connectivity happens in a remote situation with the Metco students? My third question is, do we have the ability to flex? Meaning if a parent decides at the beginning of the year, I'm going to send my kid and then doesn't feel comfortable about it after a month, do we have the ability to pull our children? Or vice versa, what will be given us as options? And then the last thing I just want to suggest is that I suspect all of the committees are coming up with things that, you know, you, you want to, you want to, like, honestly, you're probably trying to boil the ocean and you can't. There's going to be things that the school just shouldn't do or shouldn't have to do or should be required to do. And I know you're trying to do probably as a committee as much as possible. Are there things that you are tabling to say, you know what, this is better dealt with by the community? And then how is that messaging around those things that you've tabled actually filtered to the community so that we can handle them? And I'm, I'm kind of thinking maybe more around the PTO front in terms of all the various PTOs at the schools. There's certain things that the PTOs support in this, in this environment as a community. What are those things? And, and can I just suggest that, you know, don't lose those things that are probably pretty good ideas, but just don't fall within the scope of the, of the committee that's here today or, you know, and at hand here. So those are the four things, the three, the greater than three feet, the Metco. When can we, can we flex? And then also just my suggestion on community involvement.
Yeah, that, those are great questions and a great point regarding the PTOs. We're lucky to have, it's the organizations that support us. Dr. Austin, could you take the other?
Yeah, I will. Certainly 4.5 is fine. I think, you know, what we were looking for is just to an idea where people were at with the three foot. And clearly what we saw is the greater distance, the more comfortable we can. So my guess would be if we were to do another question today, we'd find a group of people that said, okay, there's a happy medium, four and a half is better. And so there's nothing that says we couldn't do four and a half. In fact, even if we did come back, what we would say, we would try to get six feet, but that might be less at times, down to three feet. That's the best we can do depending on the size of the classroom. So four and a half would be fine. You wanted anything, Jamie?
Well, I mean, Paul, that's a great point. I, I think I would also highlight in response to that question, the way that our phased sort of return to school plan works is we start, we're starting at six and then moving to three. Right? So the idea is that we gradually sort of reduce the physical distance as the health data, data and metrics sort of dictate to sort of support the decision to move to a smaller social, uh, physical distancing space between kids. But the, the, the challenge to Sky's initial point was the sort of recommendation out of the CDC and was sort of around six feet and then WHO and the American Academy of Pediatrics is recommending three. So they said, let me wait between three and six, I guess, right? So we interpreted that to start with, let's start with six and then gradually work our way to three. Again, the, if the lack of feasibility of bringing everybody back all at once was real, as was the potential health risk that that posed to go from sort of zero to 60. So we're sort of doing a gradual ramp up over time to Dr. Austin's point and gradually reducing the physical space between people.
Thank you, Jamie. So the Metco piece, we're, we are working with Metco families. In fact, we have a call coming up, I think this week with, with Metco families to determine what their specific needs are. But whatever we do with our students, Hingham will also do for Metco and ensure that they have everything they need to have their education as well. So we're certainly concerned about Metco, you know, particularly on busing, et cetera. We will, we will make sure we're able to do that. Ability to flex, the fast answer is yes, that's the requirement, they, that you could have the ability to flex. I will say there, there is a, certainly a concern that if people tell us they're going to be remote, for example, and say, okay, so we prepare you for remote. And then the next week you said, oh, no, I really want to go back into school. That may be difficult for us and we really need to grapple with how do we address that? But the quick answer is you can flex in and out of the system. Nobody's going to force you to send your child to school. That is a personal decision on your own safety, what you feel is appropriate. So, so you certainly do have that ability. And then finally, the community, I think that's a great point. And, and I think we just heard something that Ness had mentioned and Michelle, looking at KIA and after school activities, things that we can partner in different ways to be able to support students with childcare, et cetera. But that's a great point and I'm sure we'll get more information or more ideas moving in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Shelley Leepsh, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that.
You got that right. Thank you very much and thank you everyone for all the info and for getting a preview. I had a couple of questions. The first one, it was commented on that there was going to be an attempt to keep families within the same schedule. I did read today that Cohasset put out their plan and they had middle school and a different hybrid model than the elementary. And I think high school might have been a third, I'm not sure. So with families with kids in different schools, obviously that, that means almost every day they have a different kind of scenario. And I was wondering if you can adjust what the thoughts are regarding the, the different levels of school. My second question is, my sister who lives in another state was offered to select if they wanted their kids to have full remote or to go in fully or to be in a hybrid. And they have to sign up for it. And I think the state or city is assuming that they'll hit the lower enrollments by choice. And I was wondering if that was looked at since the survey said so many people wanted to keep their children at home. And then my last question was related to, I think Ness's call out regarding kids in action. So I thought that was an excellent suggestion you put out. But I was always also wondering about the before care and after care because not only we're starting to try to plan for, you know, help during the day, but now just wondering, am I also planning for before care as well if I was relying on that? So do we, do we know if that's going to be feasible to remain open? Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Dr. Austin, would you?
Sorry, I'm getting a little hoarse, so I apologize if I sound hoarse. It's been a long day. First one is your, your question around keeping students together is a really good question because there are really tricky schedules. Because there are really tricky schedules at the high school, and you're right, that may be very difficult to do. That's why we said, to the extent possible, we'll try to keep families together. That is going to be difficult and it still needs to be worked out, particularly for the secondary level students. And Rick, do you want to add anything to that at all? Sorry, Rick Swanson, principal.
Hi, thanks, Paul. No, I, I think you captured it well, but clearly there, there is a lot of complexity, the secondary schedule, the high school with over thirteen hundred students, each of whom with a totally unique schedule that creates a lot of layers of complexity that we'll have to figure out.
Thank you. As far as the other states that have offered, you know, different types of plans to different people, I, I think that's still something to be determined. Our original guidance from DESI was that we were not supposed to have different models operating at the same time. That may change, and I think necessity would say that we're going to probably have to change that. I think you are correct. There will be a portion of, of students that are going to be remote, and we need to plan for that provision. And so that will decrease the number of students that are in cohorts that are actually in person. And so that will help us in, as we adjust and moving forward. And again, as Jamie just said, the objective in our, is to, to start with smaller groups, more distancing between students. And as health metrics allow, just as the state has done, every two or three weeks, we get new metrics, things are pointing in the right directions. We don't have any infections, things are being handled well, our protocols are being followed. We can then increase the number of students in a classroom, decrease the size, and again, wait for another three weeks to make sure that we're on the same, on the right track, moving forward. So, but I think suffice it to say, we're going to, we're going to obviously put a plan for remote learning for certainly a, a group of students. The last question around KIA, which I had an answer for you today, I do not. We're trying to figure out if that is something we can continue. That is relying upon transportation, that's relying upon space, both of which are, are going to be at a premium and problematic. And so I wish I had better to report on that right now, but we're still working through that to see if we're able to do that or not. And we're not ready to make that call yet. So that's where we're at with that. Jamie, you want to add anything?
No, I mean, we, we are, I mean, space is the biggest issue. I, I might reckon, sort of, just to reassure Shelley that in our planning, we are trying to keep families together, right? So regardless of level, sort of who shows up on a day will either be determined, right now, we're sort of down between either alphabetical or by bus route. Right? To ensure that we have a level of efficiency in the transportation realm. And then that's really, I mean, once the plan, I mean, to Dr. Austin's point, once the final plan gets released, we will be trying to get a sense of who will be enrolling, right, in, in, in the district's plan or who will be opting for remote only, only because we need to have a sense of numbers and to ensure that those families that are going to be fully remote have the appropriate devices and connectivity to be able to engage in the remote learning program. But in terms of the other pieces, we're, the planning really, really, we're still trying to focus on the instructional program. We have yet, once we nail that down, then well, the attention gets turned. And now, and that's not to say that Jackie Sansone and, and John Ferris, the Director of Kids in Action and John, and the Director of Business and Support Services hasn't already been talking, right? But we're just, in terms of the final district determinations around those supplemental auxiliary programs, we've not yet made any substantive decisions because we're waiting to see what the final instructional plan looks like before we make any decision about what would complement that. Because the other complicating factor would be if it's, sort of, you'd have access to that care or that support if your child was attending that day, right? And so the other issue becomes sort of what the final cohort structure looks like, whether it is a couple of days, in a couple of days, or if it's a week on, week off. We haven't, we've certainly gotten the feedback from everybody about what their preferences are, but we've not yet landed. We were leaning toward the split week, but we haven't finalized that.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you. Next, S. Kiernan.
Hi, thanks again for holding these open sessions and being able to ask a lot of questions. So I, I think one of the questions that I had really is about the learning plan. So in one of Dr. Austin's slides, he said that quote unquote, we want to emphasize synchronous learning. And I wanted to try to better understand what percentage of the time where these kids are going to be in learning situations, will they be educated synchronously versus, you know, the asynchronous non-learning that happened all spring, which there were so many setbacks from that, it was terrible. And so I really would like to have a better understanding because my expectation at this point is that synchronous learning would be happening a hundred percent of the time. And so if that's not going to be the case, I'd like to have a better understanding of that. My second question is also related to the start date, which, you know, I understand there's some new guidance about that. And I'd like to understand about, you know, when we think we're going to be starting school now that we've moved school up by a week? Are we going to be pushing it back to the fifteenth? And when will we make a decision about that? And then thirdly, to echo the previous person's comments, that, you know, there are working parents in this town and some of whom are essential workers, including myself, who rely on schools at a very baseline minimum for childcare during the day. And so not having our kids go to school is a huge problem. You know, there are times when in the spring, I basically had to leave my children in the house by themselves because there was no one who could I let in the house. And so I think special consideration should be given to working parents who really are up a creek without a paddle when they, when their kids cannot be in school full time. So the idea of children being in school full time, especially for working parents, you know, where there isn't a parent home and allowing those parents to work, I think should be given. And I think also the idea of giving parents choice. You may end up having the numbers just shake out there because if twenty percent of parents don't want to send their kids because they're nervous or they have underlying conditions or what other mitigating circumstances there are, you may end up finding that the numbers are just good the way they are. So I think there, I would be a strong advocate for giving parents choices because there are so many individual circumstances to accommodate.
Thank you. Those are good points, Suzy.
Thank you for your questions. I'm gonna, I'll ask Dr. Lubilaw to address the learning plan or remote learning in just a minute. But just a quick, on the start date, my intent will be on the tenth, I'll bring a proposal to the school committee to adjust the calendar as appropriate at that time. I anticipate I'll do it on the tenth of August. And it would be right around that fifteenth, sixteen, whatever that day is. I know that the fourteenth was originally scheduled as a holiday, which may change because I don't think that's a holiday any longer. So we're looking into that. So I'll get back to you on, on that one. But I anticipate will be changed in the calendar, right around the fifteenth. And then regards to the working parent, I do understand that. And I, I absolutely believe we need to work collaboratively with the town and resources. And this is a collective issue for a town. And to Ness's point, and I know Michelle has also talked about this, we need to work with our selectmen and really think about wraparound services to families to support families so they can work. And I think that's the solution, if we can make that happen. So I'm certainly willing to, to take that on and I'm sure they are as well, not speaking for them, but I think know them well enough, I'm sure they're willing to take that on. And so I'll leave it at that. And then Dr. Lubilaw, if you want to talk a little bit about just your thoughts on remote learning as they are right now.
Sure. You know, we're really not in a position yet to be able to speak from the educated place around what it will look like. What the, what the slide sort of capture is the recognition that the feedback from the spring was less than ideal relative to how effective that model was. But we are actively working with our educators, and actually that was the focus of a two and a half hour meeting today, was to determine what would be the most appropriate remote learning environment and what would that look like? So we are looking at policy papers and best practices. There's a brief coming out this week outlining best practices in K-12. Up to this point, we've been relying really on the data and research coming out of post-secondary universities and universities and colleges that actually do this work more regularly than we do in K-12. So I'm not trying to dodge your question, it's just when, I, I want to make sure that when I answer it, I answer it as comprehensively and transparently as possible. And that's just not possible right now. However, if you would like to shoot me an email, I'd be more than happy to follow up with you once we have that plan finalized to a point where I feel like it's appropriate to talk about publicly.
I guess it's sort of like, it's a little disappointing that we're almost, you know, I mean, before tonight's meeting, you know, there was no change in school date. And, you know, we're five weeks away and to have a better understanding of whether the kids are going to be learning synchronously or asynchronously. And I think everyone is in complete agreement that the asynchronous learning that happened last spring was not successful. And so to do anything less than synchronous learning is a big problem. And again, knowing that fully that we, as a state, were ill-prepared for online learning. So how are you going to even qualify or assess whether your newly created synchronous learning program is going to be a success? I mean, to me, the only thing that's proven is kids being in school. Whether it's a masks, whether they're three feet apart, whether they're two feet apart, that's works as far as learning goes, and the kids need to be in school. People have been working, people have been wearing masks, they've been going out, they have fun. I can go out, I can have fun, I can do whatever I need to do as long as I wear a mask and I stay distant, and that's how you stay safe. So I think we're going to be in this virus thing for a very long time. So the sooner we get everybody wearing a mask and doing the things that they need to be doing to stay safe and to clean, the better off they're going to be. You know, and that's, you know, again, my opinion. But I think the kids that adjust the quickest, you know, you just put a mask on and then off you go. So, you know, but the, the asynchronous learning that happened in the spring was just not a success. So we, we need to be focusing on that and need to have a better understanding of what that looks like.
And as soon as we have that, I'll be more than happy to give it to you. I apologize if that did not meet your expectations, but the reality is I'm not prepared to talk about this evening.
Thank you. Suzanne Garland.
Hi, everyone. I'll try and be brief. First of all, thank you to everyone working so hard on this all summer. I know many of you from my work on the RRC with you, and I know there have been three hour phone calls on, on Thursday and Friday evening with Dr. Austin, so I appreciate that. I have to say, I was, I'm a huge, huge supporter of teachers. You know, everything, I know that the teachers worked extremely hard last year in the spring, we can all say that. Last spring was not ideal for anyone, it was not ideal for the teachers, it was not ideal for the kids. But I think to say, you know, at the start of the meeting, someone said, well, I want the next meeting, and I apologize, I forget who this was, I want the next meeting to be broadcasted from a classroom socially distanced. I think that sets the wrong tone because I could then say, I want the next meeting to be broadcast as a five-year-old trying to work remotely with two working parents. I mean, let's not, let's not do that to each other, let's not get into a fight about this, let's all work together on it to find a solution. That's, that's great for everyone. So I, I'd like to kind of change the tone, if we can, about this and try and make it about the kids and doing what's best for the kids, which is getting them the education that they deserve. And I, my other question was what Dr. Jamie just spoke to, and it sounds like we don't really have an answer yet. But if we are moving towards a hybrid model and our kids are going to be remote learning at home, there has to be live teaching involved. It, it's unacceptable for it to be anything else. And one more question was, what is the threshold that we will be using as a town for switching from six feet to three feet to full in-person? You mentioned we'd be looking at local and, or hyper-local and regional data, I think, but what are those numbers? What, what as parents can we be looking to? Thanks.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Suzanne, well, I'll, I'll answer that first, and I don't have that answer yet, but we will have that. And that's exactly what I'd be working with Susan Sarny from the Department of Public Health to do, so we make that a collaborative. I also want to be clear with people, the school department from the very beginning, and I'm, I'm fairly certain teachers as well, the objective has always been as many students in school as we can safely do that. And we're working through incredibly complex situations. I, I don't, you know, I, I respect the, you know, we, we need to be on the same side, we need to work together, we need to work collaboratively, absolutely. Everybody's going to have to sacrifice. And we also recognize it's going to take a tremendous amount of courage for some people to walk in that, into those schools. But I also want to be clear with people, there is going to have to be some flexibility too. I mean, I'm just watching today, we're watching baseball started how many days ago? And they're already talking now, shutting it down from here because of too many COVID cases. And so people see that, that's real, and we're going to be in the same situation. I don't want to tell people that we're not going to be, that would be disingenuous. So yes, I want to get students in school and I want to get them there as quickly as possible, I want to do it safely. But I'm also really aware that we're going to have metrics that certainly have just so far out of our control that we don't have any control over, and it's going to move us in and out of this situation quickly. The last thing I want to do is to start something so quickly and three days later, we're all sitting at home on quarantine with large groups of people. That would be the last thing I want to do. And so, and I don't think anybody else wants to do that. So we will develop the metrics, we'll continue to work on that. I know you had a couple of other questions, I hope Jamie, you can remember what's next. Yeah, sorry, Suzanne.
Yeah, no, hi Suzanne. I, I mean, the same goes back to the earlier commenter too. I don't want there to be misunderstanding that we somehow aren't hearing that, right, relative to the spring? And that is why we are taking as careful and thoughtful as approach as possible to design for remote learning for the fall. Again, we are, I, we are being, working to be as specific as possible around what those tools will be, what the proportion of time would look like, how students are to engage, so the tools that they'll be working with, to apply to appropriate staff and teacher training. So I don't want there to be any misunderstanding that I am sort of anyway communicating that there is no plan. It's just that it's not, we're, we're not at a point where it has reached a level of sort of stabilization and discussion where it's available for public discussion and input at this stage. So it's not, I don't want to be really, really clear, it's not that we're not working on it, it's that it's not quite ready yet. Again, just to remind the community, the guidance on remote opening, it's, I barely think it's over two weeks old, right? And so we're, we hear you loud and clear and we are working sort of around the clock with our educators and our specialists to sort of do this work every day to find out how to do this as best as possible to ensure that it is an engaging and enriching experience for all of our learners. And so we hear you, and I, I just don't want there to be a misunderstanding that we don't have anything together yet. It, it's not, it's not that, it's just that when it gets to a point where we're ready to, and that's coming. I mean, literally today was the conversation around what is the platform, how are we going to access it, what is it going to look like, what are the expectations going to look like? And that conversation ended at three thirty, right? So it, it's just that we're still actively working on all the pieces, and I just want to assure everyone who's listening and who might be watching it later on the recording, that it is coming. You have a talented group of teachers in this district, and we are working with them in collaboration to determine the best way to do that to meet their students' needs, who I will say, nobody wants to be with your students more than your, their teachers do. Right? So as much as you want them to be there, they want to have them. And we're trying again to work out the best way to do that while respecting the health and safety of everybody involved. So I, I don't really have a lot to add beyond that, but I just, to your comment about the, I, I understand it's unacceptable, I extend, I understand that it's disappointing to some. I apologize for that. There's really nothing I can do about that other than to say, we're working on it and our goal is to make you as proud of us as you, as we are of you.
Thank you.
Carrie, can I add something to that? The state, Commissioner Riley, on Friday issued Remote Learning Guidance for Fall 2020. And so just for everyone to know that, as Paul had said even five minutes ago, there, or earlier in the call, that the change in number of days from one eighty to one seventy came through, just on Friday, the more remote learning guidance came through. So that's another component of, we're all trying to keep up with it minute by minute. And that's on the web under the DESC if you're looking for it.
Yeah, that's a great point, Liza. So just on Friday, Yeah, that's a great point, Liza. So just on Friday, the guidance for music, physical education, and drama and the arts just came out literally 5:30 PM on Friday afternoon.
And we expect new guidance on remote learning hopefully this week, by the end of this week, which is the best practices, I think, that Jamie just talked about a while ago.
That is a really good point. And I really, we all hear the frustration with not being able to plan for the fall that it is. But just, just know that it's, we're sort of in the same position because things keep changing day to day. Okay, so I wanted to mention one, one thing. We are going to plan for a community feedback session sometime before the draft plan is submitted on July 31st. I see a lot of hands up, but we have other things on the agenda. So I was going to-
You mean the 10th, right? You mean the 10th, not the 30th?
We talked about community outreach was going to plan something.
Oh, yeah. No, I was thinking that the meeting would happen between July 31st and the 10th. I'm sorry.
We'll be doing something for the 31st, and then we're also going to have a full school committee meeting on the 6th. So we can take some more feedback then. And that will be when we're voting on the plan. And then there will be, I think, multiple communications after that, including a coffee with the superintendent on the 13th. So we do want to hear from you, and I don't want anyone to feel like we're shutting you down, but we just have other things on the agenda. So we'll maybe take one more question or comment, and then we're going to have to move on to the next. So Lisa Devine.
Hi, thank you. I'm a parent at the middle school, and I'm just concerned, as I know a lot of the parents are concerned, and I know there's so many unknowns right now, but once the plans are in place, and if we do go hybrid, are we all still going to have a job? And I know one of the school committee members had mentioned earlier, there are parents that are concerned with that as well because we, like myself, I'm a one-on-one, and whether you're one-on-one or you're inclusive, we're just all concerned, what's going to happen if we are hybrid? Are we still going to be needed?
Yeah, I think what I would say at this time, Lisa, thank you for your question, and I know that's a concern of a lot of people. At this time, we do not have any plans to lay off people. We need to bring people back if we can. That said, I mean, conditions change. And so I don't want to say that that's the plan because I don't have that plan right now. But if something were to like that were to happen, we would certainly communicate to you ahead of time or reasoning, et cetera. So I don't have anything that I can prepare to say yes or no. I mean, I hope to, that you have a job, and that's the plan as of right now. But that's another, you know, we need to bring students back. And that's part of the, part of the issue.
Right. And I was just wondering, like I said, just, once you make the final plans, obviously all that will be taken into consideration. We hopefully will know when the final plan is in place, if you'll be taking everyone back. Is that correct?
We'll get to that information at that time, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that question.
Thank you.
I just want to thank everyone for coming and engaging, and I wish we could get to all the questions tonight. I mentioned it earlier, but our email addresses are on the Hingham Schools page. If you have any questions or comments, would love to hear your feedback. And there will be some other opportunities to meet with Dr. Austin and the Community Outreach Committee. And again, we have another meeting on August 6th to approve the plan. So I thank you very much for all of this. And we're going to move on to item 4.2, which is update on the superintendent's entry findings report.
Well, thank you. And again, I'll apologize because I've gotten hoarse over by the minute. But I do have some notes that I'm going to read from tonight. As most of you know, that was a major undertaking for me this year was to do listen and learning throughout the year and create a report that will be posted. The full report will be posted hopefully later this week on our website to be able to read. So tonight I just have sort of an executive summary, hopefully two pages or so that I can summarize quickly for you what my findings were. And then I would encourage you to read the full report because there's a lot of details in there and hopefully it's interesting reading for you. So with that, I'll just, if you don't mind, I'm going to read. So if I look like I'm not looking at you, it's because I'll have to look at paper. So, thank you. So with the announcement of Dr. Gallo's retirement in 2018, the Hingham School Committee enlisted the services of the New England School Development Council, NSDAQ, to conduct nationwide search for her successor. And in January 2019, and after an extensive search process, the school committee hired me to succeed Dr. Gallo as superintendent of schools. Joining the district in June of 2019, and actually, it was actually before that, I think I was pretty much on board in January here regularly. I have spent countless hours in our schools. I have observed dozens of classrooms. In addition, I held multiple community coffee events, met with staff, faculty, students, parents, and community and town leaders. I've met with the teacher advisory committees and with several parent organizations such as the PTO's, Music Parents Association, CPAC, the Hingham Education Foundation, and a Hingham Sports Partnership. I've watched our students perform on stage and compete in a wide variety of athletic events. Through my listen, watch, and learn approach, I developed invaluable insights into the strengths and talents of our school system and the perceptions of our stakeholders about the district in general. As part of this entry process, I conducted a series of in-person interviews in both individual and group settings. The interviews took place during the summer and fall of 2019 and included meetings with town officials, school organization members, like school committee members, administrators, teachers, support staff, program directors, parent-teacher organization leaders, students. Each participant was asked the same set of questions, and their responses were documented, tabulated, and analyzed to identify common themes among respondents. Respondents identified the following strengths, challenges, and priorities. The strengths of the districts that people saw overall at Hingham Public Schools, and we heard about that tonight, has a very talented and dedicated teaching staff. Our schools have a strong curriculum that prepares the students well for the future, and we offer a wide variety of academic and extracurricular activities for our students. As far as the challenges go, the top three challenges that were identified by everyone interviewed was that we need to improve equity and access to resources. We need to improve the internal and external communications, and we need to improve the district consistency in collaboration. And so for the priorities for the district, the top four priorities that people identified, things that we should focus. We need to ensure equity and access to resources for all children. We need to pay attention to the social-emotional needs and academic interventions to support our students. We need to address the different district infrastructure, and we need to improve special education services. Hingham Public Schools has outstanding educators, and the district has historically been able to attract and retain strong teachers who prepare students well for the future. HPS has a strong curriculum, which is well-rounded, and provides students with the resources they need to be successful in school and life. Students have access to a wide variety of academic and extracurricular activities, and through a diverse range of opportunities, our students are able to find their individual paths to success. Although there are many positive attributes, interviews with stakeholders and D E S E that has suggested several areas that will be served as focus areas for school improvement moving forward over the next three to five years. A, ensuring equity and access to academic, arts, and athletic programs for all students. In this regard, the student will review, the district, sorry, will review, evaluate, and revise where appropriate any policies, procedures, and practices related to student equity and access to the academic arts or athletic program. B, attending to the social-emotional needs of all students through appropriate interventions and support. The district will review, evaluate, and revise where appropriate any policies, procedures, and practices that are related to the social-emotional and academic support and interventions available for all students of Hingham Public Schools. This inquiry will include an analysis of disproportionality, including the higher rates of discipline and retention for African-American students at Hingham. C, addressing the infrastructure needs of the district. The district will review, evaluate, and revise as appropriate long-range financial and facility plans to ensure adequate funding and appropriate facilities to support the needs of our students and meet the expectations of our community. And D, improving special education programs in collaboration. The district will review, revise, and evaluate the policies, procedures, and practices related to special education to ensure that appropriate and consistent services are available to all students in every school in Hingham. Finally, moving forward, the district must ensure that equity and the needs of all of our students, particularly those more vulnerable and in need of greater academic support and services, remains our top priority. We must ensure that all students are encouraged to pursue academic excellence and that each student has access to the most challenging courses. In addition, as we prepare for the fall 2020 reopening, the district needs to address the challenges that COVID-19 presents. As superintendent, I am confident we will meet these challenges before us as we begin to focus on and meet the needs of all students. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Austin. And that, your full report is very thorough, and you've really dug into the data. And I think it's, that's going to be very helpful for the district moving forward as we, we form our goals too. And this, I believe, will be posted on the website, your full report?
Yes, it will be, yes. I think it's like 30 pages long, so it's a little lengthy, but if you have some problems sleeping some night, just go ahead and read it.
Does anyone on the committee have anything, any questions about the superintendent's entry findings? Okay, not seeing anyone. I see some hands up. They've been up since the last agenda item. And does anyone have anything, any questions about the entry findings? John?
My question was more about the previous findings, the previous subject. Is that still up for discussion or no?
No, but feel free to reach out to any of us or to come to the coffee scheduled by Community Outreach. Barry Blake? I think that one's up for mistake too. Okay, so moving on, communications, communications removed, received by the superintendent.
I got to catch up with you now, sorry. Yes, I have some. So the district has received, as we talked about earlier tonight, several DESI reopening guidance on remote learning, transportation and safety protocols. And I received a group letter, which included 87 parents, if I counted correctly, signed as concerned Hingham parents, requesting that school be reopened in full capacity in the fall. The letter cited that children are not super-spreaders, as once believed. Distance learning does not work. The American Association of Pediatricians supports the full return to the classroom. COVID-19 or some variation will be with us for many months, if not years to come. And hybrid learning approach will not work. It may lead to more exposure and contacts on students' off days. The collective goal of this group is to return to an in-person, least restrictive educational environment to minimize further negative consequences. So I did receive that. I'll also say that, in fairness, the array of emails that I received, I'm not going to list them all, but I think you understand the range that I'm getting from full remote please, and you should not be thinking about open to full open, and everything in between. And a fair number of our educators who are clearly want to return to the classroom, but also very concerned about their health and safety. So while we talk about students that are not super-spreaders and carriers, certainly there is concern amongst adults in the buildings, and we're working hard to meet the needs of all. Thank you.
Thank you. I will just note that the committee also received the letter from the 87 parents that are in favor of reopening, and I appreciate them taking the time, and it was very well thought out. I've also received a lot of communications from parents who do not feel safe going back too. So it really, it's a wide range of opinions. Does anyone else have any communications on the committee? Michelle?
Thanks, Carrie. I do. And actually, I will forward this along. It was sent to me. I'm not sure if everyone on the committee already got it, but it was an update, actually, from pediatrician educators and superintendents about the return to fall, to school in the fall. And it was the American Academy of Pediatrics, American Federation of Teachers, the National Education Association, and the School Superintendent's Association of America. And they had issued a joint statement, and it's interesting. It's just a page. I will, I'll send it around to everybody if everyone didn't get it. But it basically summarizes their position that school in-person learning is the best learning for children when it's, when their social, emotional, and all their other needs can be met. So there was a little bit of the American pediatric saying, we, we recognize that in-person learning is the best, and that's what we support, when it can also include all of these other things that we may or may not be getting. But very importantly, it says that local school leaders, public health experts, educators must be at the center of the decisions about how and when schools will reopen, and that they are the people most familiar with and understanding of what the unique needs of the students and the community are. And a little bit to my point from earlier, the one thing that they also talk about in here is the schools need the resources to reopen. The government and the state can't just say reopen the schools and not provide them with the resources that they need, whether that be financial resources or space resources, whatnot. So it's an interesting communication. I'll send it off to everybody.
Thank you. That's great. Does anyone else have communications? Okay, I'm seeing a hand. Ben Lowkine?
Hi, thank you, Carrie. I'd just like to speak towards that article in particular. I know we can't go back, and I wish we couldn't speak back towards what we talked about at the beginning, but I'm a history teacher at the high school, and I also live in the town. And I would just like to stress that, you know, I know it's not a one-size-fits-all approach for school, but high school students very much can spread. And I know there's a lot of data to prove that as well. It's come out recently. So I'd like to, you know, hopefully you guys consider that. And also, just, I know the letter talked about least restrictive environment and kind of in the spirit of what school committee O'Reilly spoke of about mask wearing. I'd really like to encourage that the entire, the union representative, the school committee, and other stakeholders, the superintendent, really consider strong language for mask wearing and for, you know, to possibly put in letters home and email and communications home, things like that. I know that we plan on doing that, but I'd like some kind of language as well for possible non-compliant students and staff. I think that that's really important. And I think that, you know, as also in the spirit as school committee, Michelle talked about that we need to, you know, decisions of life and death are literally at stake here. And I think that we as a committee, as a community, need to come together and really kind of make sure that, you know, we are opening safely. And those that are non-compliant, there is kind of like language that staff can fall back on, that feel comfortable using for students and staff that are choosing to not wear a mask for reasons besides health and things like that. So I guess I'd just like to encourage you guys to come up with formal communication and formal language that can be spread to the community in that regard. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item is six unfinished business. And the first one is to review proposed section E of the Hingham Public Schools policy manual and act as appropriate. We won't be acting on anything tonight because this is a first read. This policy subcommittee worked on, as with all the other sections, with the assistance of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, field director reviewed the mass sample policies alongside the HPS policies to ensure that we have everything we need that followed the legal requirements or because they reflect best practices. Dr. Austin assisted with the discussions and solicited input from the administrators overseeing the various departments. So section E covers the business operations of the school department. So this includes facilities, building, and grounds, and with the goal of maintaining a positive and safe learning environment for our students and our staffs. Examples of policies in section E include emergency closings, buildings and grounds, management, and safety, transportation, and food services. I want to note that due to COVID and everything we've been discussing, we'll likely have to revisit these policies. But we wanted to bring this forward anyway because we want to have a structure in place. It's a lot easier to go back and work on individual policies than to rework the whole section. So as I said, this is a first read. If you have any questions, please let us know. And if anything occurs to you between now, and I imagine we'll bring this back on the 10th, please shoot me an email so we can make sure we have a comprehensive email. um, please shoot, shoot me an email so we can make sure we have a comprehensive email, um, a comprehensive, um, vote on it. An answer for you that night. Um, so does anyone have any questions right now? No? Okay. Um, so the next one is six point two, which is section F. Um, same, same deal. We worked on, this one was a lot shorter. Um, it covers facilities, development goals, retirement of facilities, naming new facilities and memorials. So you can take a look at that. Does anyone have any questions on F? Okay, great. So just let us know if you, if you do in between. Um, the next one is to review the proposed school committee meeting dates for 2020 and to 2021 and act as appropriate. So this was in your packet. And I looked through this and made some notes on it too. So, starting, uh, what, two things. Uh, one is normally there is a leadership, um, retreat in August. Dr. Austin, are you planning to do that?
We are planning to do that. Um, at this point, I believe the, I believe it's the 20th.
Okay. So we can maybe add.
But it's still to be determined still, honestly, so.
And then the other thing, we typically do a school committee retreat, usually a Saturday meeting in September. So we need to add that to the calendar. Um, are there any dates that work particularly well or don't work? I'm looking at like the tw- September 12th, September 19th.
I would think, Carrie, you'd want to put that as far back in that month as possible if we're going to, um, start school somewhere around the 15th, 16th of September. Um, uh, to, to the, well, yeah, maybe the 26th.
We could even do October 3rd.
Yeah, that might work better. Get us in and, and see what it moves.
Or the 26th and the 3rd for the people on the committee.
Yeah, I can't do the 19th. We have a master plan committee, um, public session that day. So the 26th or the 3rd. Probably, yeah.
The 3rd.
Yeah. Okay. I think that's better anyway.
That way people, schools kind of settled in, will have a, you know, good month behind.
Definitely. Does anyone have an issue with the 3rd?
I'm open to do on a Sunday if anybody would like.
Can you do the 3rd, Carlos?
Yeah, yeah. As right now, yes.
Okay. Why don't we plan on that? And it's usually eight to 11, right? Michelle?
Uh, yes. Hard, hard stop at 11.
We just clarified that we're talking about October 3rd?
Yes, October 3rd.
Thank you.
Okay, as far as the meeting for September, that was kind of up in the air. Um, we don't know if the 19th is going to be a holiday or not.
I don't believe it is. I was looking that up today. Um, I'd also like to propose that we meet, um, Tuesday, September 8th and then the 21st.
Yeah, we could do that.
Are you talking September?
Yeah, September. Um, considering that the 8th is not the first day of school. Or I don't, maybe it will be, but who knows at this point?
Oh, I can't, can't do the 8th actually. Could we, could we do the 9th?
Yep.
Wednesday, September 9th? Okay, and if we do that, then we could do the the 21st or the 28th would work.
I'd rather do the 21st and because the 28th is Yom Kippur.
Oh, okay, yep.
And then we're on that first and third or close to the first and thirds cycle?
Yeah. Okay, that's good. Um, so, and then October looked okay. Does anyone have a November looks fine, December. Um, let's see. The only, uh, other adjustment I saw was, um, in May, it has the listed, um, as May 10th. And I understand why, why it's like that, but given where the, the election is, I think it makes, makes sense to meet on May 3rd instead. So the new member can get, or members, if there are any, can get sworn in.
Well, usually we have a week in between.
Mm-hmm.
Cause the election would be May 1st.
Oh, right. Okay. Okay. So we could do the, all right. So we keep, keep the 10.
Then the, if the orientation and then the the 10th would be as you had it.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, that makes sense. Okay.
Because also just on April 26th, that's the town meeting, meeting.
Right. Okay. Okay. Um, so I'll take a motion if anyone wants to make one.
I'll make a motion that we approve the calendar for the fiscal year 2021.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, in favor, um, Michelle Air?
Hi.
Jen Benham?
Hi.
Ms. Correnti?
Hi.
Carlos De Silva? Libby Lukey?
Hi.
Uh, Liza?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. So it's approved. Okay. Uh, item 7.1, to receive subcommittee and liaison assignments for 2020, 21. Um, those are in your packet. Um, thank you all. We are lucky. We, we have a committee of doers. So we're very fortunate to have everyone signing up. So, um, I think that'd be good. We try to keep it as stable as possible. Um, so these will be listed on, for anyone watching, these will be listed on the school committee site, um, going forward. Um, 7.2 is to update the school committee operating protocols. Um, for anyone who wasn't around last year, we approved, um, some protocols as to how we work together as a committee. Um, and everyone signed on to it. Um, just things like we're working towards continuous improvement on teaching and learning. We want to stay student focused. Um, talks about how, uh, we conduct ourselves in meeting, how we can conduct ourselves in the public. Um, because it doesn't say act as appropriate on the agenda, we can't vote on this tonight. So I propose that we vote on it on August 10th. Um, but if everyone could just take a look at that, um, does anyone have any questions or feedback right now regarding these?
Carrie, would we want to put in, under our behavior where it says we will adhere to policy 3.4?
Yes.
Would we want to note either section B or BBA of the new policies?
Yes, I, I was, I was, I think we should just say policy section B.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And parentheses or some, since we haven't approved, yeah.
Yeah, okay. That sounds good. The next one is to receive notification of the appointment of Lauren Weber, Adjustment Counselor at East Elementary School. So welcome, Lauren. Um, other items as may not reasonably known 48 hours in advance of the meeting. So, um, I know Community Outreach would like to schedule an additional coffee with the superintendent. We want to give people as much possible, as, as much of an opportunity as possible to give feedback regarding the reopening of school. So Libby, do you want to take that on?
So, so we ha- I'm sorry, you say we want an additional coffee or a forum? I, I'm.
A forum.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. Um, so, uh, I will just state that we do have the coffee scheduled for August 13th at nine from nine to 10:00. Um, so, uh, Dr. Austin had an idea of, uh, scheduling a forum, uh, in very short term, uh, to allow for feedback. Um, so the committee and Dr. Austin, we need to figure out a time to do that. And then, um, uh, the Community Outreach Committee is meeting tomorrow. We can talk about the format for that forum tomorrow. Um, I think was, was, Dr. Austin, were you thinking that we could actually schedule a time for this forum, um, right now for some kind of meet?
Um, we, we have a couple of days. I think that what I would suggest is, is probably the 4th or the 5th of August. Um, and it would be just before you're going to vote on the 6th. So, um, that would give you additional time as the school committee who has to make the ultimate decision to hear from people as, as, uh, before you vote. Um, so it doesn't matter to me which day you do it on. Or if you want to do that, it's just a recommendation. Make sure that people feel like they've had a, um, an audience.
Michelle?
I'm just wondering if, Paul, if you, and I, and I know this is tough because it, everyone is so busy. But would you consider doing two, one in the morning and one in the evening, just for
I agree.
Folks who might have a hard time joining at night, even though it's a little easier during Zoom, I mean, with Zoom, um, would you, would you?
Yeah, that's, that's fine with me. I'll have to, I don't know if I can list my schedule. Yeah, I will have to come up with a schedule afterwards. If you want a morning and afternoon, I'll have to give you a schedule tomorrow. That's all right.
Does that work, Libby? We can figure that out tomorrow?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I mean, I, I feel like we need to work around Dr. Austin's schedule.
Well, we have others too. I want to say, you know, we've got Jamie and Suzanne and John and Susan. I want to make sure that we can consult with them and find a, a date we can all, and we're, we're meeting tomorrow anyway. Um, so maybe we can start to look at the space of what we might be able to do.
Great. Thank you all for putting that together. Um, so nine is adjourned to executive session. Um, does anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, um, to adjourn to executive session. Not to return to open session for the purposes of approval of minutes of the executive session held on June 22nd and June 28th to discuss strategy related to collective bargaining negotiations for the 2020, 2023 contracts. Discussing strategy related to collective bargaining negotiations with HEA Unit A for a memorandum of agreement for reopening school for the 2020, 2020, 2021 school year, the public discussion of which may be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position.
Thank you, Liza. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. Okay. Uh, roll call vote, Michelle?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Yes?
Hi.
Carlos?
Hi.
Hi.
Liza?
Hi.
Thank you very much. Thank you for, to everyone who came out tonight, um, to engage in this. We really appreciate it.